On this particular meeting, I'll be back in a moment to talk about the next portion of this meeting.
Section two of the September 28th, 2020 Board of Supervisors Meeting, I cut it into two sections because I had to do some research and some writing. Again, this is a meeting that exposes the incompetence and the lack of knowledge of not only our supervisors and the way they handle things, but also of our new manager and the employees in the office. It's just crazy what's going on here. So before I go through this next opinion piece, I want to read something to you. It's common, it's out there, it's part of the state's regulations, enumerating the duties of the supervisor of a second-class township. And I don't think any of our supervisors have really read this, because I think if they did, they would be behaving differently. But related to the topics and the material that I'm going to cover now with my opinion piece, these are relevant and you should make note of them. In section 607, Duties of the Supervisor, "The Board of Supervisors shall be charged with the general governance of the township and the execution of legislative, executive, and administrative powers, like approving zoning variances and such, in order to ensure sound fiscal management and to secure the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the township." So based on what we know, what's happened the last two to five years, this has to open up a whole new thought in your mind about what's going on. You know, how could we have supervisors that never paid their taxes? How could we have supervisors, former supervisors, that get special things done by PennDOT? How can we have a supervisor still on the board who gets a $9,000 donation from our fire department? I'm sorry, our fire company, that's the social quarters. You know, what other perks are they getting that we're not aware of? Well, there are others, but I can't talk about those right now. So also, when you think about our sewer plant, what happened to it? When you look at our town, our running country club, the golf course and the clubhouse, food and beverage, and our parks that are in disorganization, their second duty besides ensuring sound fiscal management, and this will come in important when we talk about the accounts receivable. But what about this? Their second responsibility, they have the responsibility for maintenance of township-owned equipment and facilities. So ask yourself, has this board and has the previous board and the board before them, have they done their job? And I think if you're knowledgeable about what's going on here, you'll come to the same conclusion than I have. They haven't done their job. John Crusades has been on the board for five years. David Spees, this is his third year, and he was the manager of the golf course for a year. These people are now controlling our township, and they have no concept of how to develop plans, how to manage money. They're on the board for various reasons. Crusades just wants to promote himself. You'll see it all the time. You'll see it all the time. He promotes himself. Mr. Spees, Mr. Staub, Mr. Gaultier, they're there primarily for the golf course. You'll see it since they've been on the board. Everything for the golf course has been voted on, never a debate. We'll talk about the Kubota tractor in a few moments. So here you have it, the first two requirements of a supervisor, to basically ensure sound fiscal management. Second, to maintain our property and our equipment. So with that said, let's move on to some of my comments related to what went on in this meeting on September 28th. And the first thing I want to talk about is the sewer account. Oh my God, can you believe this? If you look, and they put this on the website very late, might have even been after the meeting because I hadn't seen it. Sewer accounts receivable balance, okay? Now, this is the taxpayers' money, this is the township's money. We are owed over $1.7 million, and it grows with the fines every month. Now, no one has ever talked about the dollar amount. They've made reference to it in meetings, but that's about it. So they basically hid very significant financial information from the township and its residents. But can you imagine if you had a business, I mean, look at some of this stuff. Five to six years old, over $397,000 that we are owed. Four to six years, that's the period Crusades, Vanderlein, and Granger, they arrived and started running the township. $455,000 that we are owed. If you add up the current, one year to seven years outstanding, it's over $1.2 million we are owed. I have some notes here on the meeting, what these people were saying. There's no excuse for this. This is just financial negligence. It's negligence on the part of the board supervisors. It was negligence on the part of the previous manager. And we're not just talking about Granger now, we have to include Clarence Ham in this. He was getting an extra $1,000 a month to be the township manager. So he has to be held responsible for this as well. So there's also all kinds of things going on here. And this is the first time we learn of the extent of the receivables. This is just unacceptable. It is something that we cannot excuse them from. The supervisors start talking about, oh, the debtors, they haven't paid. Well, you know, they owe us the money, we've been subsidizing them, some of them for 10 years. The chicken processing plant, that's the big one for over $120,000. But why haven't they closed on that? Taken them to court? And they don't seem to know how to force collections. You can factor these accounts, sell them to somebody else. Maybe we get, you know, 70 cents on the dollar, depending on how collectible they are. But, you know, we have to weigh that against what we're going to spend to put all these liens and take them into, you know, court, like our new solicitor says. At least our new solicitor has an idea of what to do. Where was Fox and Rothschild in the last four or five years where they were ripping us off for millions of dollars, creating scenarios that, you know, didn't have to exist? It's mind-boggling, you know, and it goes back to what I read about what the township supervisors' responsibilities are. Sound fiscal management, okay? Now, looking at this accounts receivable, does it make sense that we have aged over seven years, $1.2 million that is outstanding in accounts receivable? Is that fiscal responsibility to you? Imagine if you were running a business, would you allow your customers to stiff you for 10 years? At the 10-year-plus mark, there's $162,000 outstanding. Five to seven years, $398,000. It's outrageous. And our supervisors, Mr. Staub, Mr. Gaultier, Mr. Spees, they're talking about how they don't want to be too hard on these scofflaws. Basically, they, I think one of the people said that some of these, they've never made payments on at all. So, you know, you have to take emotion out of this. The supervisors can't seem to do that. They always want to give everybody a break. I mean, I think they're in the wrong business. There's a lot of charities out there that they would be fantastic working for. But the township is not a charity. It's a business, and the business is running the township and its facilities and maintaining as low a tax base as possible for the residents. Now, not collecting over $1.7 million in accounts receivable doesn't help any of us. We have to make up for that. That increases our budget. Because we have to make up for what other people are using, we're subsidizing them. So in my professional experience as an accountant, and it tells me that Jennifer Savage doesn't have the experience, she doesn't understand what to do. That's why this is on the agenda. And they're looking to the lawyers on how to do this. This should be something that's taken care of behind the scenes, but she doesn't know how to do it. So I think you see the problem we have here, fiscal mismanagement. And it's a summary offense, by the way. So again, no excuse. I think Bartlet made some very good comments, listened to the meeting. I agree with everything that he says. We shouldn't be handling these debtors with kid gloves, especially the big ones. They made it obvious, they're not going to pay us, they think they're going to get away with it. And they still may get away with it. I mean, these guys are talking about maybe forgiving some of these debts or forgiving the fines, the 5% fee. You know, the township residents are losing money by subsidizing this. Hey, give me a $1.7 million loan for free. I'll take it. And with the prospect of maybe never having to pay it, right? So I think Bartlet understands how ridiculous the supervisors' comments were. And that's why he mentioned how, you know, we need to go after the big debtors very aggressively. And I agree with him. But in the end, this accounts receivable issue is obscene. It's incompetent, it's negligent. And I'm going to see if I can push for malfeasance. Because I can't imagine the excuse that these supervisors can give us for having this outstanding debt, especially Spees and Crusades. They've been on the board for years. You will not find one thing in the minutes. And according to Mr. Crusades, the minutes are the record of their business. But you also see in the videos, never a mention of these outstanding amounts, ever. And they started, Jennifer Savage, I think, admits that they only started looking at this when they decided to sell the sewer plant. She says that in the video. So she admits that they haven't even made this an issue until they decided to sell the sewer plant. So a lot of them, imagine that, $1.7 million that could have gone towards maintaining the sewer plant, which, as I read to you, their second responsibility is to maintain our facilities. And yet, in their own words, they admit they allowed the sewer plant to run down. If that's true, that's their false narrative I claim they made. But here's $1.7 million that could have been used to maintain our plant. Do you see, folks? I'm showing you how incompetent they are. And they try to cut us off, right now we can't go to public meetings. And they'll keep us out of the meetings as long as they can. They love COVID-19 as far as it goes with separating us from them. But they can't separate their stupidity. They can't hide their incompetence. This is a very serious issue. $1.7 million, and you can find this under the agendas. Go to the most recent meeting date, which is September 28th. It's the last file in there. And look at this, read it and weep. Because this is outrageous. And this is how taxpayers get ripped off. If I seem a little upset about it, that's because I am. I can't stand financial incompetence. And that's what we have here, across the whole board. Now, more on recycling. You heard earlier where it was my comments about recycling and they all jumped on it and they had their own opinions, right? Well, and then we have more information here from Bartlet, who thinks he understands what happened. And Jeff, you have no idea what you're talking about here, okay? We didn't go out and bid for weekly recycling. That's not true. And if you doubt me, go look at my videos, okay? We have a video on, and I explained this earlier, where Granger just up and up and said, well, people have come to me and said that we should be doing it weekly instead of bi-weekly. And everybody jumped on the bandwagon because I think it was pre-planned. Oh yes, let's do it weekly. So they voted to do it weekly. It was never bitted out, Jeff, weekly, I can tell you that. I can show you that. I have the evidence, okay? So it's not true that it came, Spees says, well, we only had one option. That is not true. And the option that we actually should have adopted was to continue doing what we're doing, collecting every two weeks, and that would be it. We paid a little bit over $200,000 a year when we were collecting every two weeks. Now we're paying well over a half a million dollars, all right? So I won't argue with Jeff on whether the costs have increased or when we last increased the charges to the taxpayers. That's an evaluation, it should be done, financial evaluation by the director of our finance department, Jennifer Savage, if she could do that. What is the real cost to us? What should it be? What's the most economical way to collect these recyclables? You know, at the least expense to the taxpayer. And my position is, it's bi-weekly. And yes, we should get a bid on the separate things, the collection and then the processing. And my opinion, I think we should try to cut out Mascaro and find another recycling source and see what we could do. In fact, we should not move forward until we have three identified recycling sources and find out what that's going to cost us, the taxpayer, all right? Not Blazinski, he's going to have to take it, if he gets the contract to collect again, he's going to have to take it to wherever the processing plant is. That's on him. We had one bidder, that might have been true. Because I remember when we bitted this thing out, they had, you know, one bidder, the way they did it, we had three bidders. One, of course, was Blazinski, one was some garbage collection company in another county, and then the third one was a name where they said they didn't receive the bid from that person. So that's not a bid at all. So I think it was managed. I think that the foregone conclusion was Blazinski was going to get it, and that was it. And Mascaro was going to get his benefit, which they claim seemed to have myopic eyes on this. They don't understand that this was all to even out his manufacturing process, his processing of recyclables. Instead of waiting every two weeks, he was getting it every week. And look, that costs you, taxpayer. If you're watching this video, I want you to understand, this is the ripoff. So because Bartlet mentions the ripoff, and he said there is no ripoff. But there is a ripoff, and it has to do with the frequency of collecting the recyclables and the fact that we really only had one bidder. We didn't have a choice. So and the way they're talking about this recycling process, Bartlet says, well, we haven't done it for years. We haven't reviewed the real cost. Well, this looks like a tax increase, folks. And what did they tell us when they sold us the dilapidated, non-salvageable sewage plant? That money would be ensured that there are no tax increases for years, right? Don't hold your breath. Okay, that's enough on the recycling. Now let's talk about the Kubota tractor, okay? First of all, the golf season's almost over. I don't know that we should be spending $30,000 on a tractor right now. This doesn't make sense to me. If I was reviewing all this stuff, it's a real want, it's not a need, okay? Is this a need? No, we have a tractor. And what does the guy say? He says, well, you know, it needs new tires. And that would be $4,000, okay? So instead of spending $4,000 to make it work through the rest of the season and maybe part of next season, he wants to spend $30,000, okay? Oh, but wait a minute. It's not budgeted to buy it for $30,000. Jen Savage claims it's in the budget as being financed. Now, I don't know if it is or not. I couldn't find it. It doesn't look like it is. They often tell us things that are not true, and after an investigation, we find out that they're not true. But let's take her word for it right now, it's being financed. So, but wait a minute, our budget is blown up because of COVID-19. Instead of spending, we should be foregoing spending until things normalize. So again, it's a want or a need. This is not a need, this is a want. So I say, if it needs new tires, put some new tires on it. Because they can be salvageable. And if they're 4K and we part out the tractor or whatever, we'll get some of our money back. But 30K in a time of budget issues, I think it's a mistake. I think it's a real mistake. Somewhere in this dialogue about the Kubota tractor, even Crusades admits he made a mistake, which is very weird. I think he's trying to salvage his reputation, but maybe there are other things on his mind that we can't talk about. So then they talk about what could it be used for other purposes, like, you know, outside of the golf course. Well, this raises another issue, you know? If you get certain weeds and seeds in the tires, and then they come back and you put them in the golf course, then you have contamination. It's a minor issue, but it can happen. So I think, you know, and here you go, you're going to have Spees, and you're going to have Staub, and you're going to have, Gaultier are going to support this purchase because it's the golf course. And these three guys are focused on one thing, the golf course. They only think about the things that influence their desires, their needs, not the needs of this township. So here you have it, they went ahead anyway. Instead of thinking about it, they went ahead and they're ordering this tractor anyway. They made a motion, they're going to do it, come hell or high water, it's going. And Spees earlier had made a comment about keeping it for parts, but then someone said, well, no, let's sell it, and they passed the motion to sell it. So it's not useful for us, but apparently somebody else might buy it. I just think you could see here the lack of financial acumen. You know, they're not very smart, they're not thinking clearly. With a busted budget, it's crazy to spend this. But they've gone ahead and they've done it. They're planning on buying it. So again, I want you to remember Spees, Staub, and Crusades, all golf course-related. These guys should not be allowed to vote on this stuff. They got a clearance from the Ethics Commission. However, I questioned what they submitted to the Ethics Commission, I read it. And they should be concerned. All right. That's the Kubota tractor that we're buying that we should not be buying. HVAC, oh boy, I'll tell you. Again, going back to two things. The first two things that are enumerated in the state statute for second-class township supervisors, fiscal management and also maintaining our facilities. It's very clear, it's specified, it's specific, it's not vague. It's not vague at all. So what we find out here, as you listen to the meeting, they went out and got this quote four years ago. Some of the work was done, but then it stopped. Four years ago. This is why our facilities are rundown. So now, instead of $250,000, which they put in the budget for 2020, and I guess they didn't bother to find out if the prices went up because now they're saying it's going to cost us, rounded off, $300,000. Because the price is four years old. This is, everyone has to laugh at this, I think, before you cry. Because there's no excuse for this. Why wait four years? We spend the money on getting the bid, and apparently they did some preliminary work. They don't tell us what that is, but Bartlet told us that they still owe us some stuff, some work that we paid them for, okay? We paid them for some work that they didn't provide us with yet, four years ago, all right? And, you know, I could say a lot of things about this. This is the last topic I'm going to talk about. But it's just aggravating, and I hope the citizens of this township get a better idea of how incompetent they are. Spees and Crusades have been on this for, Spees for three years now, Crusades for five years. And they're in charge, and it's finally coming up, but it shows you, they were doing nothing. They were focused on selling our plant, getting that money so that they could buy the promenade. And now they're going to, can you imagine if they can't handle these things in an expeditious way? What's it going to be like with this contractor here? Now, if you look at our budget, they have budgeted for this year and the next two years over $20,000. Twenty, I'm sorry, not 20,000, $20 million to spend on beginning to get the promenade up to building the buildings they want to put up there. And I say that's understated. Just like if this was $250,000, now it's $300,000. I guarantee you that promenade isn't going to be $20 million. It's going to be closer to $40 million. And they may even sell our current buildings and take that money and build the cross-town connector. Because I've heard rumors about that. And that's ridiculous. They're wasting our money, folks, because they have no one watching what they're doing. There's no accountability. They do whatever they want. Because you are not doing your job. You need to contact them, you need to get involved in the meetings. They're only an hour or an hour and a half long most of the time. And you don't even have to go there, just watch it on YouTube now and send in your complaints and your concerns. Not just to the supervisors, because they're just going to laugh at you. You've got to send them into the district attorney's office. All right, the district attorney's office. Now, many of these things now, you might say, well, they're not breaking law. But there are, when we could prove that they violated the fiscal management or the lack of maintaining our facilities, what we could do is what's called a summary judgment. And we could go after them, believe it or not. They don't think so, but it's possible. So finally, I want to close this opinion piece for September 28th. And I want to just conclude with the fact that we have a manager who's green. I think he overstated his experience and his abilities. He's not a real good communicator. He's not aware of the Ethics Commission laws. I doubt that he's aware of the second-class township laws, specifically the supervisors' duties. But in general, the supervisors themselves have a very myopic view of how to manage our township. And they refuse, in fact, they become indignant if people like me or like Mr. Carmelo and others suggest that there might be something else, another way to do it. They become very indignant, and we know like Crusades, he's attacked over a dozen people that I know that are friends of mine. He's attacked me numerous occasions. He constantly attacks Michelle Kircher. We have it on video. It's there for everyone to see. So they have a myopic view on things. They can't seem to solve problems. And that's what they should be doing. We have old problems that keep becoming older and older. We have new problems that are showing up, but they can't solve the problems. It goes on and on and on. For example, the bed and breakfast issue. Something like two and a half years. The noise ordinance, over two years. Look at our accounts receivable, 10 years. And we have 1.7 million dollars in accounts receivable. When I worked for Raytheon, I also worked with a gentleman who was in charge of accounts receivable. He was a total expert. I learned so much from him. And he had an impeccable rate of collections. The auditors would come in, sit down, talk to him, look at the records, and that was it. Because they knew he was an impeccable individual when it came to managing accounts receivable. And that's what it's all about, folks, managing it. And you can see they didn't manage it at all. So, no problem solving and no follow-through. Mr. Carmelo, I believe, made comments about why aren't you giving us an update on all these other programs every meeting? So maybe you could say, well, here are all the issues that are outstanding. Nothing else has happened, there's nothing else to report on this and this and this. But here is the update on this subject. But they don't do that. There's no follow-through. They don't keep it in front of them to know what they're doing. Then there's a lack of candor. We could see this in this meeting. We could see how they treat people who make comments. Now, this one was a little more subdued than most. It's obvious they looked at my comments so that they could prepare to answer them before it was heard. Which, I were told that doesn't happen, but I know they did that. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been prepared. But you can look at previous videos where they attack us. They've attacked Carmelo, they've attacked other individuals who question things. So, there's no candor on this board. They're dishonest. Absolutely dishonest. They'll tell you whatever they need to tell you to subdue your concerns. And then finally, the inexperience. I've already went over the basic backgrounds of each individual on the board. And just merely being inexperienced in government isn't a terrible thing. But these people do no homework. They rely on their front office, the administration, and their new manager, who I think is not as experienced as he claims he is. Because these supervisors are not prepared. Absolutely not prepared. And you can tell by the long discussions that occur. They're not looking at the information, they're not digging deeper themselves to understand the issues. It's just not happening. Inexperience. So, these are my opinions. And I hope that even if you may not agree with me, you can arrive at your own conclusions. I just wanted to point out the things that I see and the little issues, the little facts behind the scenes that you may not be aware of. Because I spend a lot of time looking at all of them. I'm very familiar with what's going on here. And I respect anyone that has opinions that differ from mine. It's important. But keep in mind that I have the best interest of the community in mind. That's why I do these. I hope you enjoyed my opinion piece. I hope you watch this video of the meeting on September 28th because it is very revealing. Thank you.
I thought I would add a little levity into this presentation because I think it's necessary. And when you read Dilbert and what's going on in this cartoon, you have to wonder if it's not also going on, it must be going on in our township government. How could you have 1.7 million dollars in accounts receivable? The bulk of it, you know, four to seven years old? And this is the first we've heard about these amounts? Oh, they've mentioned it, but they've never talked about the amounts. So could this happen here in Exeter government? That they are reporting many things where they are omitting important context? You bet they are. And I'm trying to reveal this to you, to show you the dark side of our government. And right now, we've got two people, Spees and Crusaders, who are leading the charge on continuing to maintain this, keeping things invisible to us because of their own specific personal agendas. I hope you enjoyed this cartoon. I hope you'll take a moment to reflect on what I'm saying and what the cartoon says. And let's continue with our opinion piece and viewing the video of September 28th, 2020 Township Board of Supervisors Meeting.